Good morning, everyone. We're in the record. As Chairperson of the Alcohol Beverage Control Board for the District of Columbia in accordance with D C Official Code Section two five seven six of the Open Meetings Act, I am welcoming you to the regular scheduled meeting of the Alcohol and Beverage Control Board. This meeting has been conducted pursuant to guidance made available by the District of Columbia's Office of Open Government regarding electronic meetings held by public bodies during the public health emergency. Pursuant to this guidance, notice of today's meeting was provided forty eight hours in advance of the meeting on ABRIS website and on the district's central meeting calendar. The notice included the time, date, agenda, and call-in or login information for public participation. This electronic meeting has been hosted by a Webex account provided by the District of Columbia government. Please address any questions or complaints to the O O G at opengufoffice@dc.gov. My name is Donovan Anderson, and I'm Chairman of the Board. I would like to introduce the other members of the A B C Board who are also participating electronically pursuant to Mayor's Order two thousand twenty dash zero five four. Please respond when I announce your name, Mister James Short.
Mister James Short, present.
Mister Bobby Cato.
Bobby Cato, present.
Miss Rafi Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, present.
Miss Jenny Hansen.
Jenny Hansen, present.
Mister Edward Grandis.
Edward Grandis, present.
The board has six members in attendance for the conduct of business today, and that constitutes a quorum. Before we get underway with today's hearing calendar, I need to make a few instructions very clear so that the conduct of these hearings is understood by everyone. There are nine cases scheduled for today. Once your case is called, I will take a moment for our I T specialists to elevate the rights for each party to enable their camera and microphone. Then and only then will you have the ability to enable your equipment. If your case has not been heard, you'll remain mute and your camera will be disabled. At the conclusion of each case, the parties will have the option to leave. If a party chooses to stay, all cameras and microphones for the concluded case will be disabled. Should you have any questions or require technical assistance during the hearing, please submit them using the question and answer feature or email Simone dot Andrews to at D C dot gov. Our first order business today is a show-off status here in case number twenty two five one zero 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 three four. Angelo Restaurante Italiana, license number one zero nine four one seven. Miss Andrews, can you please elevate the rights of the government, please, in this case?
Sure, stand by. Mister Louis, your rights have been elevated. That's all, Mister Chair.
Thank you. All right, good morning, everyone. Mister Louis, can you please spell and state your names on the record, please?
Hi, good morning, Mister Chairperson and board members. My name is John Louis. That's J O H N L U I. Thank you.
All right, good morning. The agency was was previously informed that the licensee will not participate today based on a religious obligation. But because this is a show-off status here in his presence today, it's not necessary. This matter then will be scheduled for a show-off, show-off hearing and a future date to be determined, and the agency will advise both you, Mister Louis, and the applicant on the date and time of the scheduled show-off hearing. All right, thank you very much. All right. The next case in our calendar is case number twenty C C zero 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 five nine Universal Liquors, license number seven two two one three. Is this case, is Miss Andrews, can you please elevate the rights of the government and of the licensee, please? Is this your case, Mister Louis? Okay, fine. So, Miss Andrews, there is another O H A H attorney, can you please elevate her rights and also the rights of the licensee, please?
Mister, there is Fernando on the line, only other attorney. I'm gonna go ahead and elevate his rights.
Mister Chairperson.
Yes, Mister.
I believe that the hearing is continued to June twenty third, twenty twenty one.
No, no, Mister, no, Mister Louis, that this case has not been the universal liquor. I have not been given any information that this case has been continued. This is an active case on my calendar, and so.
Oh, I pulled the calendar from this morning, and I see it.
This this case, Mister Louis, is universal liquors. And this case is an active case. This case is an active case, so I need this is an active case, at least from from our, from my perspective, I have not been given any information that this case has has been continued. So, hold on, please. Hold on one minute, please, hold on. I'm just trying to get clarification. If it was continued, it was continued, but I don't have the date when it was continued to. So, well, I'm just trying to get some clarification at once. All right. Okay, so I've received the clarification. So, twenty twenty C C zero 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 five nine Universal Liquors, license number seven two two one three. This case has been continued to June twenty third at ten thirty A M. All right, the next, thank you. The next case on our calendar is case number twenty two five one zero 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 three six Turin Madrid Restaurant, license number zero six zero eight zero six. Miss Andrews, can you please elevate the rights of the licensee for this case, please?
Sure, stand by. Mister Garan, elevated? Investigator Brashears, your rights have been elevated. That's all, Mister Chair.
Thank you. All right. Let's have Mister Louis, can you please identify yourself for the record, please?
All right, good morning, Mister Chairperson. This is John Louis on behalf of the government. That's J O H N L U I. Thank you.
Thank you. Mister Garan, can you please spell and state your name for the record, please?
Yes, Ernesto Girón, E R N E S T O. Last name, G I R O N. I'm the owner of Churrera Madrid.
Good morning. All right, this was supposed to be a show-off here in this case that we're supposed to cover a couple of cases. But so before we start, Mister Louis, are there any preliminary matters?
Yes, there is, Mister Chairperson.
And what is that, what is that, please?
The government makes an oral motion to continue today's show-off hearing until May fifth for for three reasons. The first reason is that the additional time will allow the parties to file a joint stipulation of facts so that at the May fifth hearing, it will it will only go to just argue as to penalty and not 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 as to the facts. And the second reason is that the parties are engaging in settlement discussions and that the additional and that we may be able to reach an agreement even before the May fifth continuance. And lastly, the third reason is that the licensee consents to the to the continuing.
I I did hear that. I just wanted, Mister Garan, is that correct that you consent, that you do consent to continue this case to May fifth at May fifth, twenty twenty one, at ten thirty A M. Is that correct?
Yes, I do.
All right. With that said, I do make a motion that the board continue this matter to May fifth, twenty twenty one, at ten thirty A M. Is there is there a second?
Mister Shaw, a second?
Mister Shaw, a second. The motion will have a roll call vote and a motion that has been properly seconded by Mister Shaw. Yes, 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 Mister, yes, Mister Grandis.
I would like to ask Mister Louis a question. May I ask a question, and you can decide whether we can ask it or not?
Yes, ask the question, please. Yes.
Mister Louis, could you just refresh my memory when the date of this incident was?
Well, hello, Mister Mister Grandis, there are if my understanding is that there are four cases that would be addressed in this case today, if this case was to move forward. So which incident are you speaking about?
Well, I I just would like this to be refreshed with the dates of of each incident.
Well, the first, the first case that was on the calendar, it was case, it was the first case that was on the calendar is case number nineteen A U D zero zero one one nine. And that case was a failure to file the required quarterly statement for the period July two thousand nineteen to September two thousand nineteen. The second case was case number twenty C M P zero zero three one seven, which is provide that the person provided live entertainment without endorsement. The third case was case number twenty two five one zero 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 three six, which was to allow the establishment to be used for unlawful purposes. And the fourth case was case number nineteen C M P zero zero two zero seven. The show-off notice has not been issued as yet, but this this case was failure to keep and maintain book and records books and records for three years and and failure to comply with the the mayor's order. So these are all cases that occurred in two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty. Those were the four cases that we would have addressed today.
Thank you, and I I just I just would like Mister Louis to understand that I'm speaking for myself, not for the board, but I know we had a pandemic. I know everyone has been, you know, we have, we've had to push things out. That's all, you know, understandable. I just don't understand, and I'm not asking for an explanation, but it just would make me more comfortable if we could have some of these matters to us sooner. More close to the date of the of the incident.
Well, I I, well, part of it, though, Mister Grandis, is that, as you are aware, based on the pandemic, all the cases, the the A B C Board, although the A B C Board ha- has been meeting consistently through the pandemic, we did not started, we did not start to do live hearings until a couple of relatively recent. So the majority of the cases, just based on the pandemic, were automatically continued to a later date. But one of the reasons why I did support the continuance today, it is based on the they was based on the day, based on what was presented by the parties, that it appears that the parties have agreed to the factual, the underlying factual factual allegations in each case, and the 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 parties will either present the board with a global settlement or that or they will present the board with an underlying agreement that actually all parties are in agree to the facts. And when we hear this case in two weeks, then the board will either make a determination on the penalty or the board will agree or disagree with with an O I C that's that's being provided to the government. So that's been provided by the government. So I believe that because it's only two weeks, I believe that in this case it's it's appropriate, and that's why I support.
And 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 I will, and I will as well. So, Mister Chairman, thank you for the explanation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mister Grandis. All right. So the motion was to continue this this matter through May fifth. And and to be fair to Board Member Grandis, one of the cases, it's a case that the board considers egregious. I'll just say it that way. And so the board was concerned that this matter to be, should it should be addressed as soon as possible because of the if if true, the underlying allegation that's in one of the cases here. So that's one of the reasons why there is concern by the board that we believe that this matter should be addressed as soon as possible. So I want to thank Board Member Grandis for bringing this to the attention. So it's not a matter of him not agreeing with it. It's just that the underlying conditions in at least one of the under underlying factual allegations in one of the case, the board, the board is very much concerned about that. And so that's why the board wants these matters to be addressed as soon as wants these matters to be addressed as soon as possible. But I believe based on the presentation that was made today that, um, we will have some type of resolution, um, at our hearing, if we do have a hearing on May fifth, um, at ten thirty. Okay, thank you. So the motion that was properly seconded by Mister Short was to continue this matter to, um, May fifth at ten thirty AM. Mister Short is second the motion. So all those in favor, I'll, I'll respond. Mister Short?
Mister Short, I agree.
I'm Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
And Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter passes six zero zero. Um, I do hope, as the parties are aware, the board is concerned about this case and the board is concerned that this matter be brought to resolution as soon as possible. But um, based on the presentation that were made by the parties today, they believe that there, at least there is some underlying agreement, at least to the factual allegations in this case. And so when we have this here on the fifth, it, um, the, i- if there's no agreement, we will just, um, have your testimony on what penalty, if, if any, should be imposed. So I want to thank the party for making that presentation today and thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Alright. Alright, um, the next case in our calendar, and this was supposed to be, we're supposed to have an afternoon calendar, but we're not going to have an after, afternoon calendar. So let me present these cases that were on our calendar for this afternoon. The, this, the case that was scheduled for, uh, one thirty was case number nineteen C M P zero zero two two three Hawthorne, license number nine nine six zero three. Um, this hearing is canceled. The parties entered into an offer in compromise on April seventh, twenty twenty one. Seaboard Order Number twenty twenty one dash one eight one. The next case in our calendar is case number nineteen C M P zero 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 four one Hawthorne, license number nine nine six zero three. This hearing is canceled. The parties entered into an offer in compromise on April seventh, twenty twenty one. Seaboard Order Number twenty twenty one dash one eight one. The next case in our calendar is case number twenty cc zero 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 two three, Law Society, license number eight three four two zero. This hearing is canceled. The parties entered into an offer in compromise on April seventh, twenty twenty one. Seaboard Order Number twenty twenty one dash one eight three. The next case in our calendar is case number twenty two five one dash zero 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 one three. The Gold Room Bar Lounge, license number one one four seven five seven. This hearing is continued to May nineteenth, twenty twenty one at one thirty PM at the request of, at the request of the respondent with the consent of the government. The next case in our calendar is case number nineteen C M P zero zero one seven eight Red Red Lounge Hooker, license number seven six zero one one. This hearing is canceled and continued to June ninth, twenty twenty one at one thirty PM. The next case in our calendar is case number twenty A U D zero 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 one six Flavio, license number eight zero zero four. This hearing is continued to May nineteenth, twenty twenty one at one thirty PM. And that ends our scheduled calendar for the day. So let's now move to our legal agenda. The first matter on our legal agenda, it's a request of advisory commissioner, neighborhood commissioner five D. These, this is a request to grandfather its previously filed protest of Seven Foods Liquor Renewal Application. This is Seven Food. Food Seven Store License. Number eight four seven nine. I make a motion that we approve this request. Is there a second?
Miss Crockett, second.
Miss Crockett, a second. The motion will now have a roll call vote on the motion that has been properly seconded by Miss Crockett. Mister Short?
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kate, Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
And Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter passed six zero zero. The next matter on our legal agenda, it's a review of the amended settlement agreement dated March twenty fourth, twenty twenty one between A N C Commissioner, uh, I'm sorry, Advisory Neighborhood, Neighborhood Commission five B and Michigan Liquors License Number one zero four two two two. I make a motion that we approve this request. Is there a second?
Miss Crockett, seconds.
Miss Crockett, a second. The motion will now have a roll call vote on the motion that has been properly seconded by Miss Crockett. Mister Short?
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter passes six zero zero. The next matter on our legal agenda is review of DC food markets request for continuance of the protest hearing. Um, food, the DC food market, license number one zero six nine six two. I make a motion that we approve this request and the new date is now May thirteenth, twenty twenty one at ten AM. Is there a second?
Ed Grandis.
Mister Grandis, the motion will now have a roll call vote to the motion that's been properly seconded by Mister Grandis. Mister Short?
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter passed six zero zero. The next matter on our agenda is a review of restaurant associate, associates' request for reinstatement of its license dated April fifteenth, twenty twenty one, um, restaurant associates license number zero zero one one three three. I make a motion that we approve this request. Is there a second?
Mister Shaw, a second.
Mister Short, a second. The motion will now have a roll call vote in the motion that's been properly seconded by Mister Short. Mister Short?
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter passes six zero zero. The next matter on our agenda is a review of the settlement agreement dated March twentieth, twenty twenty one between Advisory Neighborhood Commission one B and Uproar License Number zero nine two zero one two. I make a motion that we approve of this request. Is there a second?
Miss Crockett, seconds.
Miss Crockett, a second. The motion will now have a roll call vote in the motion that's been properly seconded by Miss Crockett. Mister Short?
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter passed six zero zero. The next matter on our agenda is a review of the consent motion for continuance dated April sixteenth, twenty twenty one in case number twenty two five one zero 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 nine. This is the Gold Room Bar Lounge License Number one one four seven five seven. I make a motion that we continue this matter to May nineteenth, twenty twenty one at one thirty PM. Is there a second?
Ed Grandis, a second.
Mister Grandis, a second. The motion will have a roll call vote in the motion. Uh, Mister Short?
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter passed six zero zero. The next matter is a review of settlement agreement dated March tenth, twenty twenty one between Advisory Neighborhood Commission one A and Taco Bell Cantina License, License Number one one seven 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 seven. I make a motion that we approve this agreement with modifications. Is there a second?
Miss Crockett, seconds.
Miss Crockett, a second. The motion will now have a roll call vote on the motion that's been properly seconded by Miss Crockett. Uh, Mister Short?
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
Mister Grandis, I agree. The matter passes, um, six zero zero. The next matter on our agenda is a review of a settlement agreement dated April nineteenth, twenty twenty one between Advisory Neighborhood Commission three E and Le Cavacha Bistro, license number one one seven seven six eight. I make a motion that we approve this request. Is there a second?
Mister Shaw, a second.
Mister Short, a second. The motion will now have a roll call vote in the motion that's been properly seconded by Mister Short. Mister Short?
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter passes six zero zero. We now move to our license agenda. The first matter on our license agenda is to review an application for stipulated license with letter of A N C support for a new ABC establishment. This is Delina, license number one one seven nine two six. I make a motion that we approve this request. Is there a second?
Ed Grandis will second.
Mister Grandis, a second. The motion will now have a roll call vote, um, that has been seconded by Mister Grandis. Uh, Mister Short?
Mister Short, I agree.
Uh, Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
And Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter passes six zero zero. The next matter on our agenda is to review request to extend safety and cape enough license, safe keeping of license. This is for, to be determined formerly S L K six L L C, license number one zero eight one three five. I make a motion to extend this request through September thirtieth, twenty twenty one. Is there a second?
Miss Crockett, seconds.
Miss Crockett, a second. The motion will now have a roll call vote in the motion that's been properly seconded by Miss Crockett. Mister Short?
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
And Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter passes six zero zero. The next matter on our license agenda is a review request to extend safety and cape key, safe keeping of license. This is, um, to be determined, um, formerly V D S L L C, formerly Brown Street Market, license number one zero eight two eight eight. I make a motion that we approve this request through September thirtieth, twenty twenty one. Is there a second?
Miss Crockett, seconds.
Miss Crockett, a second. The motion will now have a roll call vote in the motion that's been seconded by Miss Crockett. Mister Short?
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
And Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter passed six zero zero. The next matter on our license agenda is a review request to extend safe keeping of license. This is for Bullfrog Bagels Pest, Pesture. License number one zero zero two four nine. I make a motion that we approve this request through September thirtieth, twenty twenty one. Is there a second?
Mister Shaw, a second.
Mister Short, a second. The motion will now have a roll call vote in the motion that's been properly seconded by Mister Short. Mister Short?
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter passed six zero zero. The next matter is a review application for entertainment endorsement to provide live entertainment with covered charge outdoors in a summer garden. This is for Ghost Line, license number one one seven zero eight nine. I make a motion that we placard this matter. Is there a second?
Ed Grandis, a second.
Uh, Mister Grandis, a second. The motion, um, will make, uh, I'll make a roll call vote. We'll, we'll now have a roll call vote on the motion that's the proper second by Mister Grandis. Mister Short?
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato. Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
Mister Grandis, I agree. The matter passed six zero zero. The next matter is a review application for entertainment endorsement to provide live entertainment both indoors and outdoors. This is for Electric Kool-Aid, license number one one two two nine four. I make a motion that we refer this back to license and is there a second?
Mister Shaw, a second.
Mister Short, a second. The motion will now have a roll call vote on the motion. Mister Short?
Mister Shaw, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter passed six zero zero. The next matter is a review application for change of hours. This is for Electric Kool-Aid, license number one one two two nine four. I make a motion that refers this back to license and is there a second?
Mister Shaw, a second.
Mister Short, a second. The motion will now have a roll call vote on the motion. Mister Short?
Mister Shaw, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
Mister Grandis, I agree. The matter passed six zero zero. The next matter is, um, review application for change of hours. This is for Capital Grounds Cafe, license number one one seven six three zero. I make a motion that we placard this matter. Is there a second?
Miss Crockett, seconds.
Miss Crockett, a second. The motion will now have a roll call vote on the motion. Mister Short?
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter passed six zero zero. The next matter is a review application for change of hours to open earlier for breakfast, both indoors and outdoors. This is Found In Farmers, license number zero seven seven zero six one. I make a motion that we approve this request. Is there a second?
Miss Crockett, seconds.
Miss Crockett, a second. The motion will now have a roll call vote on the motion. Mister Short?
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter passed six zero zero. The next matter is review application to allow the licensee to use common dining areas of the La Cacheta, Cacheta Marketplace. Um, this is, request has been made by La MLS, license number one one seven four six one. I make a motion that we approve this request. Is there a second?
Edward Grandis, a second.
Mister Grandis, a second. The motion will now have a roll call vote on the motion. Mister Short?
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
And Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter passed six zero zero. The next one, the next, next one is a review request to allow licensee to use common dining. And Mister Anderson, I agree, the matter pass six zero zero, the next one, the next next one is a review request to allow licensee to use common down in areas. Off the La Cacheta Marketplace, the request has been made by. Caqueria Las Hemelus License Number one one seven four six two. I make a motion that we approve this request as they're second.
Edward Grandis will second.
Mister Grandis, I second the motion will now have a roll call vote on the motion, Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Hanson.
Jenny Hansen, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
Mister Anderson, I agree, the matter pass six zero zero, the next matter is um review letter of request to update premises address. To seventeen thirty three fourteen Street Northwest. Um um the old address was seventeen oh one fourteen Street Northwest, and this is. Um that it's to be determined formerly Amazon Retail LLC. License Number one one six seven six one, I make a motion that we approve this request, is there a second?
Miss Crockett seconds.
Miss Crockett, I second the motion will now have a roll call vote on the motion, Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Hanson.
Jenny Hansen, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
Mister Anderson, I agree, the matter pass six zero zero, the next matter. On our agenda is review request for an off-site storage permit to store alcoholic beverage inventory. In an additional larger building located at the same address as the premises, this request has been made by Little Pearl. License Number one zero seven seven nine two, I make a motion that we refer this matter back to license and is there a second?
Mister Short, I second.
Mister Short, I second the motion will now have a roll call vote on the motion that's the proper second by Mister Short, Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Hanson.
Jenny Hansen, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
Mister Anderson, I agree, the matter pass six zero zero, the next matter is a review request to allow Foxtrot Ventures. Inc, which has common ownership of the reference licensee to serve as paymaster for the alcoholic beverage wholesale. Invoices received by the licensee, the licensee has been made by um Foxtrot. License Number one one five seven zero five, I make a motion that we approve this request, is there a second? Bobby Kato. Um Mister Kato and Miss Crockett, I second the motion will now have a roll call vote on the motion, Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss and Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hansen, I agree.
Mister Grand, Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
And Mister Anderson, I agree, the matter pass six zero zero, the next request is um. Is the review request to allow Foxtrot Ventures Inc. Which has common ownership of the reference licensee to serve as paymaster for the alcoholic beverage wholesaler invoices received. By the licensee, the request has been made by Foxtrot License Number one one five five. One four. Is there a second, I make a motion that we approve this matter, is there a second?
Edward Grandis will second.
Mister Grandis, I second the motion will now have a roll call vote on the motion that's the proper second, Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Hanson.
Jenny Hansen, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
Mister Anderson, I agree, the matter pass six zero zero, the next request is a re- review request to produce. Several previously approved products in higher potency, the request is made by. Fido Cultivation LLC um License Number. One one seven three seven four slash M M P zero 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 six four. I make a motion that we approve this request, is there a second?
Miss Crockett seconds.
Miss Crockett, I second the motion will now have a roll call vote on the motion that's been properly second by Miss Crockett, Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Hanson.
Jenny Hansen, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
Mister Anderson, I agree, the matter pass six zero zero. We now move to our supplemental license and agenda, the first matter on our supplemental license and agenda. It's review request for an off-site storage permit to store alcohol beverage inventory. At seven twenty one D Street Southeast Basement, the request has been made by Classy Corks Wine and Spirits. License Number one one six seven three zero, I make a motion that we refer this manner back to license and is there a second?
Mister Short, I second.
Mister Short, I second the motion will now have a roll call vote on the motion, Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hansen, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
And Mister Anderson, I agree, the matter pass six zero zero, the next matter on our. Uh agenda is review request for an off-site storage permit to store alcoholic beverage inventory. At twenty eight hundred eighth Street Southeast, the request has been made by Taste Select Repeat. License Number one one six eight six one, I make a motion that we approve this request as they're second.
Miss Crockett seconds.
Miss Crockett, I second the motion, I have a roll call vote on the motion, Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Hanson.
Jenny Hansen, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
Mister Anderson, I agree, the matter pass is six zero zero, the next matter on our. Agenda is a review of background check for application for employment at a medical cannabis facility. I make a motion that we refer this matter back to licensing, is there a second?
Edward Grandis will second.
Mister Grandis, I second the motion will now have a roll call vote on the motion, Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Hanson.
Jenny Hansen, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
Mister Anderson, I agree, the matter pass six zero zero, we now move to our cancellation agenda. The A B C Board will be canceling the following licenses for the reasons that like outlined below. Margaret River Import License Number zero eight nine two eight six. The licensee requested cancellation, I make a motion that we approve this request, is there a second?
Mister Short, I second.
Mister Short, I second the motion will now have a roll call vote on the motion that's been properly second by Mister Short, Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hansen, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
And Mister Anderson, I agree, the matter pass is six zero zero, all right, we now move to our cease and desist agenda for class A licensing. There are licensed, there are twenty three licenses on this agenda for the day. I will review all the names of the licensee. Um once I'm, once I've done reading all twenty three names, I will then make a motion that the A B C Board. Issue cease and desist um notices to these establishments, so again, I'll review all twenty three names and then I'll make a motion. All right, so the first establishment is Syndicated Brands LLC License Number one zero five eight six eight, the licensee did not renew. The second establishment is Target Liquor License Number zero 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 four three four, the licensee did not renew. The next establishment is Hayden's Inc, License Number zero 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 four three seven, the licensee did not renew. The next establishment is New Da Hinson Trading Inc. License Number zero two three five zero one, the licensee did not renew. Sportsman Wine and Liquors License Number zero seven zero three one zero, the licensee did not renew. Next establishment establishment is Grandell's Liquor License Number zero seven one three one two, the licensee did not renew. The next establishment is Tenny Wine and Liquors License Number zero seven eight zero one four, the licensee did not renew. Circle Wine and Spirits License Number zero eight zero eight three zero, the licensee did not renew. Victor Liquors License Number zero eight eight one seven three, the licensee did not renew. Ezra's License Number zero eight nine seven three zero, the licensee did not renew. Park Market License Number zero nine four one seven eight, the licensee did not renew. Tent Street Market License Number zero nine five two five one, the licensee did not renew. Bell Wine and Liquor License Number zero nine five nine eight four, the licensee did not renew. Big D Liquors License Number zero nine eight two five five, the licensee did not renew. District Still License Number one zero two five two one, the licensee did not renew. Local Vine License Number one zero three seven nine five, the licensee did not renew. Best Deals Wine License Number one zero four six four one, the licensee did not renew. Avon. Ico Valley Cafe and Liquor License Number. One zero five two seven three, the licensee did not renew. Saying Wine and Spirits License Number one zero seven four six four, the licensee did not renew. Best One Liquors License License Number one zero nine five four five, the licensee did not renew. Napa Liquor License Number one one three five eight seven, the licensee did not renew. Louis Africa License Number one one four six nine zero, the licensee did not renew. And Toughly Imports License Number one one six eight seven five, the licensee did not renew. I therefore make a motion that the A B C Board issues cease and cease and desist orders to. The twenty three establishments that were that are on the cease and desist agenda for today, that was read previously read in the. Record today, I make a motion that we issue those orders, is there a second?
Miss Crockett seconds.
Miss Crockett, I second the motion will now have a roll call vote on the motion that's been properly second by Miss Crockett, Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Hanson.
Jenny Hansen, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
And Mister Anderson, I agree, the matter pass six zero zero, we now move to the board's temporary liquor. And temporary license and one day subst- substantial change docket. The first matter on this docket is a request from. Elodie Ikuzan for a one-day license class G, this is an um a wedding. On April twenty fourth twenty twenty one at twenty four thirty seven fifteen Street North. Northwest um License Number one one eight one five four with fifty attendees and one security guard. I make a motion that the board approve this event is here, this license is here, second.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Short, I second the motion will now have a roll call vote in the motion that's been properly second by Mister Short, Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Hanson.
Jenny Hansen, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
Mister Anderson, I agree, the matter pass six zero zero. The next request is a request made by Surf Surfside Scribo LLC, this is again for one day substantial change. This is for Secret of Myer Celebration um sub- substantial change to use off premises at eighteen hundred N Street. Northwest on five five twenty one from eleven AM to ten PM. Um this is um the license number is one one three two five. Three and a substantial change license application number is twenty one S C zero zero five eight. And I make a motion that the board approves this request, is there a second?
Miss Grandis.
Miss Crockett and Mister Grandis, I second the motion will now have a roll call vote on the motion, um Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Hanson.
Jenny Hansen, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
And Mister Anderson, I agree, the matter pass six zero zero, uh we now move to our docket, there are. There are twenty three establishments on our docket, I'm gonna um read them. Excuse me, I'm gonna read the name of the establishments, I will um list the type of establishment it is. The type of request that they have made, and at the end of all twenty three, I will make a motion that the board. Approve the changes that were being requested, all right, so the first request, a request made by Duck Duck Goose. License Number one one eight one zero zero, they are a class C restaurant. And it's a transfer without, I'm sorry, a transfer with sale application. The second request, a request made by La Dos Day Vita License Number one one. Seven nine seven eight, they are retailer C Tavern, this is a transfer with sale application. The next request, a request made by Smash Burger Number seventeen thirty eight, the license number one one seven six nine. They are a retailer, D Restaurant, this is a new A B C license application. Can I ask all board members to mute their, please, I'm sorry, the line, please. The next request, a request made by D C Capital Square Bar and Grill License Number. One one eight one four nine, they are caterer, this is a new A B C license application. The next request is a request made by, um it's to be determined License Number one one six four one three. They are um retailer C Restaurant, this is a trade name change application, the new name is Emmy Squared. The next request, a request made by Eric M Murphy. License Number twenty one I M P zero 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 one zero, this is a personal importation permit application. The next request, a request made by um Go Red For Woman License Number twenty one. Auction zero 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 four, the request of it's a. Um online nonprofit, nonprofit. Auction permit application. And by American Heart Association, the next request is another request um from the American Heart Association, the trade name for this event. Is Hearts Delight, uh the license number is twenty one auction zero 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 three. Again, this is an online nonprofit auction permit application, the next request, a request made by Brooklyn. License Number one 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 four one one, they are retailer C Restaurant. This is a transfer without sale application, the next request, a request made by Rodman's Discount Drugs. License Number zero 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 three nine four, they are retailer B. This is a class change to full service growth through B applications, the next request, a request. Um this is by to be determined License Number one one seven one eight two, they are retailer C Tavern. This is transfer without sale into safekeeping application, the next request is a request made by. The Shepherd License Number one one five nine three nine, they are retailer C Tavern, this is. They are retailer C Tavern, this is a new ABC license application. The next request, a request made by Vibes on H, license number one, one, seven, seven, five, three. They are retailer C Tavern, this is for new ABC license application. The next request, a request made by Vibes on H, license number one, one, seven, seven, five, four. This is a caterers, this is a new ABC license application. The next request, a request made by Taco Bell Cantina, license number one, one, seven, 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 seven. They are retailer, um, C restaurant, this is a new ABC license application. The next request, a request made by Farmers and Distilleries, license number one, zero, zero, six, four, seven. They are a retailer C restaurant, this is a sidewalk cafe with seventy-three seats application. The next request, a request made by The Lane, license number one, one, five, six, oh, four. They are retailer C restaurant, this is a change of hours application. The next request, a request made by The Lane, license number one, one, five, six, zero, four. They are retailer C restaurant, this is an entertainment endorsement application. The next request, request made by St. Regis Hotel, license number nine, nine, four, five, four. They are retailer C restaurant, this is a request for Summer Garden endorsement application with fifty seats. The next request, a request made by McCasa, license number one, one, seven, six, seven, nine. They are retailer C restaurant, this is a new ABC license application. The next request, a request made by Le Tabacha Bistro, license number one, one, seven, seven, six, eight. They are retailer C restaurant, it's a new ABC license application. The next request is a request from Mayfair Liquors, license number one, one, eight, one, nine, three. They are retailer, a liquor store, this is a transfer with sale application. And the final request, a request made by Breakthrough Beverage, license number six, zero, five, one, eight. They are resale, wholesaler A, this is gift and loan, gift and loans disclosure. I therefore make a motion that the ABC Board, um, approve the changes that were made to the license, to the licenses for all the establishments that were just read in the record, is there a second?
Mr. Short, I second.
Mr. Short, a second of the motion will now have a roll call vote in the motion that has been properly second by Mr. Short, Mr. Short.
Mr. Short, I agree.
Mr. Cato.
Bobby Cato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mr. Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
And Mr. Anderson, I agree, the matter passes six zero zero. We have now come to the end of our calendar and after our scheduled agenda for the day. And so I will now, um, close the record, our adjournment for the day. Um, so therefore, as chairperson of the Alcohol Beverage Control Board for the District of Columbia in accordance with Title III, Chapter Four or Five, Office of Government, I move that ABC Board hold a closed meeting on April twenty-second, two thousand twenty twenty-one for the purpose of discussing and hearing reports concerning ongoing or planned investigations of alleged criminal or civil misconduct or violations of law or regulations and seeking legal advice from our legal counsel on the board's investigative agenda, legal agenda, and licensing agenda for April twenty-second, um, twenty twenty-one, as published in the DC Register on April ninth, twenty twenty-one. Is there a second?
Miss Crockett, seconds.
Miss Crockett, a second of the motion will now have a roll call vote on the motion that's been properly second by Miss Crockett, Mr. Short.
Mr. Short, I agree.
Mr. Cato.
Bobby Cato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mr. Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
And Mr. Anderson, I agree, the matter, as it appears, that the motion has passed. I hereby give notice that the ABC Board will hold this aforementioned closed meeting pursuant to Open Meetings Act. Notice will also be posted on ABC Board hearing room bulletin board placed on electronic calendar on Abrams website and published in the DC Register in as timely a manner as practical. We are now adjourned for the day. And I will now, I want to thank the board for its participation. I would like to thank the public for its participation in this public hearing today. And I now direct the board to return to executive session for further action. Thank you very much and have a great day.